All right. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of April eighteenth. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin this afternoon with our Mayor's Award of Excellence. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, we're catching up here.
We're back on track, aren't we?
Yeah, this is the Mayor's Award for Excellence for the month of February, being presented to a team of police officers, in this case from Central Investigation Section of the Police Department, Tyler Cooper and Eric Messersmith. Sergeant Luke Wilkie nominated them in the categories of productivity and safety for the work they did in solving several robberies in the last few months. Between October and December, Investigators Cooper and Messersmith looked into a number of high-profile crimes by connecting what she called some unlikely dots. They cleared an attempted robbery in October with the information that they got from initial arrests and continued work, they were able to clear several more cases in short order. They also built on their work to develop probable cause to arrest a known gang member from Omaha with a significant criminal history. He had been coming to Lincoln and committing armed robberies of convenience stores here in town. He's now in jail on several robbery charges and related gun charges. Because of the work of Investigators Cooper and Messersmith, our community is indeed a safer place. Sergeant Wilkie wrote, "The quality of the police work done by these two investigators is such that cases will, the cases involved will likely be disposed of through guilty pleas rather than trials." Phenomenal police work, he called it. So it's my pleasure to present Tyler Cooper and Eric Messersmith with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for February. Please join me in congratulating them. Come on up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Brian, are you going to say a few words?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Certainly want to thank the mayor for the program that operates to recognize employees across the city, as well as the time the council gives to recognize our employees. Our staff has the opportunity to rotate in and off the street, and these officers, several years ago, would be in uniform, answering calls. They have an opportunity to go into our Criminal Division, learn a new skill, really develop it, which is a good example of what they've done. And they'll rotate back on the street in the next year or two to also apply those skills on the street as a uniform officer. It gives a great opportunity for us, the Lincoln Police Department, to better serve our community, to leverage the high quality of the staff that we have so that they can, they can learn new skills and apply them, and really show and demonstrate where we have a difficult time, when we have extraordinary work all the time, that becomes just ordinary based on our staff and the work that they do. And so, we greatly appreciate what you do, and you set an example for everybody else, and we greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief, do you want to introduce yourself before you leave, so people know who you are?
Brian Jackson. I'm the Assistant Chief, currently Interim Chief for the next nine or ten days. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. We appreciate the time and the recognition. My wife, Amanda. Been married for just over eleven years. And my youngest son, Hazen, and my oldest son, Jarrett.
I'm Tyler Cooper. I'd echo Eric's thanks and gratitude to the City Council and Mr. Mayor. My wife, Megan, here in the blue. And then my mother, Darla Cooper, and my son, Warren, are on the end there.
Thank you. All right. In accordance with L.B. eight ninety-eight, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The Order of Business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date, nor planned for a future agenda. If you need an agenda, we have some in the back of the room, or you can follow along on your smartphone by going to lincoln dot any dot gov and clicking on the City Council Meeting. If you need a parking pass, Teresa has some, or we have some in the City Council office just next door. Let's move on to the first item.
All right. First, I would state, we would clearly request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item was our public hearing consent agenda, items one through twenty.
Anyone wishing to speak on an item on our consent agenda, please come forward. All right.
If not, we can vote on these items. Items one through five and eleven through seventeen were introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl, discussion. Okay, call the roll, please.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, then, are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Witnesses or applicants are not required to stay for the voting session. I'll call items twenty-one and twenty-two together. They are the application of Magalex, doing business as Pinot's Pallet, for a Class I liquor license at thirty-nine hundred Yankee Hill Road, Suite one twenty-seven, and the related manager application of John Cook.
Hi.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Counsel, I am John Cook. I am a sole shareholder of Magalex Company, LLC. I'm in the process of starting Pinot's Pallet, which is a franchise business. The franchiser is out of Houston, Texas, with over a hundred and forty studios. Pinot's Pallet is part of the brush and paint and sip industry, which is a new term. We will be providing art classes with lessons, paintings, all the equipment necessary, directed paintings. An artist will be at the front, and we'll direct everyone on how to do the painting, mix the paint, to get a good result. These are done nationally and internationally. We also plan to have customers be able to buy wine and beer, which is why I'm here for the application liquor license. It's, it's an entertainment. We try to make these as much fun as possible, and we want to make sure that everyone has a fun time and ends up leaving with a good painting that they're proud of.
Is there, is there a relationship between the amount of alcohol consumed and the quality of the painting?
There is some theory that there's some lubrication of the creative energy. I don't know if it's true or not. According to the franchiser, we do not have a big problem with excessive drinking because people do have to be able to focus on their painting while they're doing it. But it's entertaining, entertaining and fun to do, so. And we only serve liquor to those who are actually doing classes.
John?
Yeah, well, you said they're painting. You didn't say what they're painting.
One of the big reasons I chose Pinot's Pallet is because they have an extensive library of protected, copyright-protected paintings to choose from. They have a lot of experience with it. We'll be able to choose paintings that we know the public likes, and we know that the public can paint successfully.
I was hoping to be house painting, so I could get a class.
No, 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 no. Mostly landscapes and some, a lot of it's very graphic design. So it'll be fun.
Other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
And I'm also the manager of the, which is the second.
Yep. All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Good luck.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right, next item, please.
All right, next, I'll call items twenty-three through twenty-five. They're the application of Homegrown Industries of Lincoln, LLC, doing businesses Mellow Mushroom for a Class I and Class E Entertainment District liquor license at six oh one R Street, number one ten, and the related manager application of Brian Hamilton.
Hi. My name's Larry Elbers.
Would you raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Elbers. I'm representing today Homegrown Industries of America. Homegrown Industries of America dismissed us as Mellow Mushroom. They have franchises throughout the United States. Currently, they operate about two hundred restaurants. Recently, they acquired the restaurant here in Lincoln from a franchisee, and we're here today to submit our application for a liquor license and a manager's license, and for the license that we need by virtue of the Entertainment District. There are no planned changes in the operation, significant changes in the operation. The area covered by the license has remained the same. So virtually anybody coming into the restaurant, probably except for some changes or improvements that Brian will be making, probably wouldn't notice any changes. Do you have any questions of me?
Questions? All right.
Otherwise, I would like to introduce then Brian Hamilton. Brian is the manager, and at the time that the letter was submitted, Brian had not yet gone through the training. He has since gone through the training, so I'd like for him just to affirm that to you today.
All right.
Brian, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you really believe it to be?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address for the record.
Brian James Hamilton, eight oh five Ginny Avenue, apartment thirteen, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight, five oh eight. Excuse me.
Any questions? Cindy?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thanks for coming today.
My pleasure.
So, how long have you been managing down there at Mellow Mushroom?
This would be week number five, for me.
Okay, 'cause it gets crazy on game days, you know that, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'd worked, I've been in the restaurant business for about seventeen years throughout Nebraska, North Platte, Carney, Omaha, Lincoln, and then also spent three and a half years in Alabama. So I've also worked in the Hay Market before. It's actually where I started the restaurant business.
Did you work at the Mellow down, isn't there one in Alabama?
There's quite a few. So, the company's based out of Atlanta, Georgia, so I've been with them for a short period of time.
Oh, those crazy guys from the seventies.
Absolutely.
A lot of work.
Well, thank you.
Brian, I had mentioned that at the time that we had submitted the application, that you had not yet obtained your required alcohol management training. Is that now complete?
Yes, it was completed last Thursday.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay, next item, please.
All right, next then is item twenty-six, application of Omaha Expo and Racing, for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately forty-five feet by eighty feet and approximately twenty-five feet by seventy feet at the Lincoln Racecourse at seventy fifty-five South First Street on May sixth, seventh, and twenty-first, June eleventh, September eighth, and November fifth, between the hours of seven AM and two AM.
Okay, sorry. I'm Christie Harris. I'm general manager at Lincoln Racecourse in seven oh five five South First Street in Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five one two. And we'll, I'll just explain what we're doing. It's similar to what we've done in the past. It's just, we're trying to get the, all the event days in one hearing. So the first event days is the Derby Weekend, that's May sixth and seventh. The second set of dates is Preakness Stakes Weekend, and the third set is the Belmont Stakes, and then the fourth set is our Live Race Day, and then the fifth date is the, is the Breeders' Cup Weekend. And similar to in the past, some of those weekends, we have a tent, and some of the weekends, we don't. We just have an open beer garden area, but it's the same area for every weekend.
Questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right, next item, please.
All right, next, I'll call items twenty-seven through thirty, as they all relate to the same event. We have the application of Junto, LLC, Piedmont Hospitality, Wondorosa, LLC, and Deer Springs Winery, LLC, for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately one hundred twenty feet by one hundred eighty feet, and an indoor area measuring approximately sixty feet by ninety feet at the Shops at Piedmont at twelve sixty-five South Cotner on June fourth, between five PM and eleven PM.
How you all doing? So we are setting this up similar to the Oktoberfest last year.
Get your name and address before, name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Brian Wallingford, and the address is twenty-two thirty North Sixtieth.
Thank you.
As of last year, or as similar to last year, we will have the tent set up in the same area in the Shops at Piedmont. I do know that the diagram that you have received, I have been informed that it's six parking spaces over what's required, so I will knock those six parking spaces off. I'm not sure if that's in your notes or not, but I figured I'd let you know. We will have a sixty-by-ninety-foot tent set up exactly where it was before, and we have wineries from all over the state of Nebraska. They will be coming. They will not be selling any alcohol whatsoever. I've asked them to get their S.D.L., to kind of cover everybody and make sure everyone's safe. However, the only ones selling the tickets to consume alcohol or food or beer of any kind will be the people who are mainly requesting the Piedmont Bistro. It is their liquor license.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item?
Actually, do you have one more question? I brought it up to Cindy before. I'm going to have more of the local wineries that are going to be asking for S.D.L.s and things. Do I need to continue to come back to represent them each time? Or can this testimony go towards the future S.D.L. for the same event and everything for it?
Normally, we have them come for their S.D.L.s. It's good that you packaged the rest of these.
I tried to get everyone to do it soon enough.
Have more next week, then? Would it be next week, Teresa?
I know for sure there are some in the beginning of May.
The second, I think, is the next time.
The beginning of May, I know there is some. I can do it however you would like. I just wanted to know ahead of time, so I didn't miss.
How many more are you looking at?
Well, there are going to be a total of, I believe, fourteen or so Nebraska wineries that are going to be a part of this, and they are all bringing their own staff. They all are going to have their own serving, you know, permits and everything like that. So I guess the answer would be eight or ten more or so.
What if, we'd had the memo the other day, we talked about, or I had a call from somebody out in Lexington or out west, they know, they said, gee, I have to drive a hundred and fifty miles to it.
Yeah, I'm guessing that's who called me today.
What if you bunched them all together, and you made appearance on their behalf? It would be my opinion, I defer to my colleagues.
I think that's fine.
That's what I've been trying to do, is group them all together.
So we just do one more hearing if you could put them all together?
I, sounds good. I will get them, make sure that everyone who doesn't have it in will have it in within the next week. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right, next item, please.
All right, next, I'll call items thirty-one and thirty-two. They are the application of Glacial Till Vineyard and Winery for S.D.L.s for the two separate farmers markets. One is for an area measuring approximately ten feet by ten feet at the Lincoln Hay Market, Farmers Market at Canopy Street and Q Street on May seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth, June fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth, July second, ninth, sixteen, twenty-third, and thirtieth, August sixth, thirteenth, twentieth, and twenty-seventh, September third, tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth, and October first, eighth, and fifteenth, between the hours of eight AM and noon, and then the one for the Old Cheney Farmers Market at fifty-five hundred Old Cheney Road on April twenty-fourth, May first, eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-ninth, June fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth, July third, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first, August seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth, September fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth, and October second, ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third, and thirtieth, between the hours of ten AM and two PM.
I'm Tim Merman with Glacial Till Vineyard and Winery, and trying to knock all the S.D.L.s out here at once. So we participate at the Farmers Market, have a ten-foot-by-ten-foot booth, offer free samples upon showing IDs, and then we sell bottles of wine to go. That's what will be happening at all these events.
John?
Just to refresh my memory, did you sell the bottles last year, or was it just samples? Oh, okay.
Any other questions? All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward.
Mr. Chair, I have the approval of items twenty-one through thirty-two.
Second.
Carl, discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, then, are our public hearing resolutions. Item thirty-three, waiver one six zero zero one, application of Bangtine Win and Treen Fam to waive the additional parking required by a change in use from vacant commercial to restaurant on property located at twenty-seven oh eight Y Street.
Hello, my name is Ed Malk, M.A.L.K. I live at eight zero three three North Shore Drive in Lincoln, six eight five one six. I am a personal friend of the owner of the restaurant, and what I wanted to do today to address you is, in regards to the letter of opposition that you have received, okay, we decided to look, we did a parking evaluation of our lot, and it's reported in there, and at that time, we noted that the maximum number of cars that we had in there was seventeen, okay, which was far, far below full capacity. In his opposition letter, he said that our parking lot was full, which it hasn't been full. The second thing we did is he said that we were parking in the lot behind the, behind the apartment building, which is, I don't know if you can see this.
It's coming up.
Okay. And specifically, we're talking about this lot along here, which is the residential parking area, okay? And so what we did is we ran another test for another four days, and we actually confirmed that there are no cars from the restaurant parking at least during that four-day period, okay, and we want to report that. The other thing, relative to the parking along the north side of Y Street, away from the restaurant, but alongside the parking complex, we looked at it over the four days, and this was the kind of results that we had. And it basically shows that, yes, our customers are parking along the north side of Y Street, and typically four to five. And if we really look at it long enough, you could see one of them, at least when they park on the far end, is usually someone who's at the apartment and not, not with us. Other than that, we just wanted to be here to answer any questions that you might have.
Carl?
Thank you. So the restaurant's been open for how long?
My name is Treen Fam, I own it by myself. First, I'm owner of the BonTO restaurant, I own, own so that building. I have been in the restaurant business for, since nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine.
And this particular?
The restaurant opened before that, but I took it over by that time.
In ninety-nine?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And I occupied that building before that, about nineteen ninety-five, and I purchased that building, um, four years ago, I believe, two thousand and twelve.
And are you expanding the restaurant?
Yes, I do, because I, I did expand it by the time, only one time, but according to the opposition letter, he mentioned about expanding twice. But when I took it over, they have been expanded. The second expand by myself, because the, I own the right next, the unit right next on the restaurant, and the next on, not the jewelry section, that two seven oh six Y Street, and the next on that, two seven oh four. And who is the coffee shop, China Azure Coffee? And whatever reason, and he have been cast by one thousand marijuana plant about four or five years ago, I believe. And the owner of the building suddenly asking me to take it over, and a couple of days later, a couple of weeks later, he asked, "Do you want to purchase this building?" I say, "Yes." And I tried to bargain with him on the market price, but he still keep verbal agreement with me on day one, when I asking him, "And when you sell this building, please ask me." And he keep that verbal agreement, he asking me, and he give me the price, and I'm unable to reduce the price.
And the parking lot has seventeen spaces, is that?
The parking lot, the current parking lot has twenty-two spaces, the way that it's laid out.
Twenty-two, okay, okay. And the, the requirement is for thirty spaces, is that right?
Thirty spaces is based on one every one hundred square feet.
Okay. And you're seeking a waiver?
To one over two hundred square feet.
Okay.
Which takes it down to fifteen spots.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward.
My name, my name is Russell Irwin. I'm president of the Clinton Neighborhood Organization. My address is three two seven four Merrill, M.E.R.R.I.L.L. Street. I would ask for favor, the waiver, to allow them to expand their restaurant without any more parking spaces. They're, they're a good, a good business, and we're pleased to have them in the organization's territory.
Carl?
Thanks, Mr. Irwin. So Clinton Neighborhood is, this restaurant's located in the Clinton neighborhood, is that?
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And Clint, I know Clinton neighbors are not shy about this coming forward if their issues regarding parking or conflicts with businesses. Are there any such conflicts that, that you've had with this business?
Not that I've been informed about, no.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Next testifier? You can come over to this side, he fills out. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Marty Lee. I'm with Neighbor Works, Lincoln. My address is sixty-four thirty-five Lexington, Lincoln, six eight five oh five. I am one of the community builders at Neighbor Works, Lincoln, and working with the North Twenty-seventh Street Business and Civic Association, and we are here to also endorse the request for the, the parking variance. We've worked with, with the owner and talked to the area businesses in the area and have gotten support from them.
All right. Questions? All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right. Seeing none, next item, please.
All right.
John?
Could we have staff questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Please, they'll lay up there. Thank you.
Sorry.
You're expeditious.
Yeah.
David Carey with the Planning Department?
Yes, Mr. Carey, could you just, again, review some of the requirements that would normally be in place, and what you, your observations are on this waiver, and perhaps other precedents that we've encountered?
Sure. Under the, the current regulations, the, the normal parking standard is one parking spot for every six hundred square feet, and that would be for the-
non-restaurant uses that could go into this area. Um, currently, the requirement is one to, one space per one hundred square feet for restaurants. What this, um, waiver is proposing is the one to two hundred, obviously, and that's how the numbers are, would make, would work on the site. The Planning Department's position on this is that, um, over the years, we've seen a few of these come in for the, in the B-one and B-three districts. These are meant to be smaller commercial areas where they're normally in older parts of the city where, um, basically, there's not as much room, uh, to grow into. Uh, and generally speaking, we are in support of having activities like this, restaurants within neighborhoods to at least have a chance to, uh, be successful. And in this case, the parking, we have determined should not be a hindrance to that happening. And I would say that the information that they provided with kind of actually monitoring the use of their parking and showing that they were not maxing out the existing spaces was very useful in our decision-making in this, this situation as well. So, uh, I'd like to point out that we are working on a package of, um, smaller zoning code changes, um, in a general sense, one of which is this more permanent change for the B-one and B-three district to bring down the restaurant requirement to that lower requirement instead of the one to one hundred. So, as far as we're concerned, this would make sense and it could make sense in other areas as well, not just in this location, but in this case, we are supportive of this particular one.
As you review it, uh, say you did it here, um, what if, well, Mr. Pham has expanded over the years, what if there was a a sale to some other owner and you suddenly have a, a higher intense use? I guess your comments on that and would we maybe want to make the waiver personalized to him or rather than just a perpetual easement?
Well, what, what we did look at as well with this is that there is an additional bay that's not yet occupied yet. So, and even based on this one to two hundred way of setting the, the requirement for parking, even if that bay turned into a restaurant, they would have the adequate amount of parking, uh, if they adjusted a little bit of their, the formation of their parking on site. So, um, there is an opportunity for that expansion to happen on the site, but we felt like they had the capacity to adj- deal with that possible increase in activity. Um, so in that case, I think we would be okay still with the one to two hundred.
I just, I know we've had in different type situations, neighbors that have been, uh, concerned about future usurping of the on-street parking or whatever. I just want to make sure that while it may work today, that somewhere down the road, we're not having unintended consequence.
Yeah, and I think that to, to a certain extent, we would want to do a case-by-case basis as well, but, uh, when we look at changing the zoning code for this, we felt, we felt like the situations in the past, as well as those that we kind of thought of hypothetically, that these still would work, mainly because oftentimes, as, as in the case with this one, is there is on-street parking available and cl- close by. Uh, there is, uh, generally the opportunity to walk in and out, in and from the neighborhood to use these restaurants, which is partly what we would like to see in the older parts of the area of the city, uh, to do that anyways. Um, so I think that generally speaking, we feel comfortable with this type of a, of a waiver, um, and even in other applications. But of course, we would also be cognizant of, uh, particular neighborhoods and input at the time of those projects. If there was a real feeling that there was going to be a problem with that, we'd have to take that into consideration, but there isn't in this case, obviously. There's general support overall.
So what would be the duration of this waiver? Is it in perpetuity and it flow with the land or?
Yes, it would go with the, go with this property, um, if, if the, if the zoning were to change, which we're not saying that that would change, but that would change the conditions on the site, I guess. But in general sense, it would go with the land, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alright, thank you. Alright, next item, please.
Alright, next is our public hearing ordinance's second reading. I'll call item thirty-four, change of zone one-six-zero-zero-seven. Application of Peyton Daly for a change from R-one residential to R-two residential on property generally located at forty-eight eleven Braddock Court.
Anyone here wishing to speak to this item, please come forward?
I don't see the applicant here, so I guess I'll, I'll fit in here.
Alright.
Um, just to really, just to review this, the, the proposal is to, uh, make the change of zone from R-one to R-two. Um, the idea here, here is that, um, we identified an area, in this case, a cul-de-sac that made some sense as far as if it's going to be a change of zone for this purpose, that we wouldn't do a spot zone on one property. We would try to look for a logical area that would have, um, application, uh, more consistently in an area that would be the most affected by that. Gone through the process, um, to have the hearing with the Planning Commission. Uh, there has been discussion about, um, what the impact would be on the other property owners along that, uh, cul-de-sac. Generally speaking, uh, in order for the applicant to achieve what they, what he wants to achieve on his site, he would need this change of zone to allow the setbacks to occur or to be applied, um, so that he could expand his structure accordingly. I would note, uh, note, though, that the, uh, the way that the zoning code is written right now, uh, there's a provision for, um, it's a forty percent of the properties, and all these properties are built on now, um, that if there is a, um, an existence of a smaller setback, that the smaller setback would prevail. And so the front yard part of what the applicant is hoping to do, uh, is not resolved by this change of zone. The side yard is resolved if, with this change of zone. We explained that to the applicant. The applicant realizes that, uh, we, again, part of that package of zoning changes that has yet to come forward, but will later on this year, uh, does address that piece of this, that we would allow, we would want that provision to apply to the R-one zoning district, but not other zoning districts, mainly because the traditional R-one are larger lots that traditionally would have larger setbacks. Um, so we would want that provision for the reten- retention of the traditional setback to, to remain. Once you get to these more suburban-type lots, it's not as, as important, I guess is the way to put it. So, the applicant knows that, that he's got two steps to take. This would get him one step closer, but it's not all the way there yet.
Questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward? Alright, next item, please.
Alright, next then are items thirty-five and thirty-six. They are annexation one-six-zero-zero-three, annexing approximately nineteen point thirty-seven acres of property generally located at South Thirty-third and Wilderness Hills Boulevard, uh, Boulevard, and the related change of zone for a change from A.G. Agricultural to R-three residential.
Alright. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward? You're having an active day today.
Putting on different hats today. David Carey with the Planning Department. Um, I don't, I don't see the applicant here, but I guess this one really is pretty straightforward. It's another phase of the Wilderness Hills development. Um, not really too much else to explain on that one.
Alright, any questions? Alright, thank you. Alright, anyone wishing to speak? Alright, next item, please.
Alright, next then is our public hearing ordinance's third reading, item thirty-seven. Amending chapter four-point-two-eight of the Lincoln municipal code, uh, relating to drones.
Alright, anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward? Do we have any staff questions? Okay, we left it open, alright.
Alright, that would conclude our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Alright. Public hearing resolutions, item thirty-three, waiver one-six-zero-zero-one, introduced by Rebal.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Roy, discussion. Alright, call the ro, oh, Carl, go ahead.
Well, just, um, as, as we heard in the testimony, I think, um, this, the North Twenty-seventh Street area has, has, it was a, uh, a district that was, uh, just went off its, uh, fifteen years of being a TIF district. A lot of, a lot of positive redevelopment in the area. This, uh, restaurant is a, is an important part of that, so I'm supportive of the change.
Alright, any other comments? Alright, call the roll, please.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebal?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Public hearing ordinance's second reading are items thirty-four through thirty-six. Ordinance's third reading, item thirty-seven, is the amending chapter four-point-two-eight of the Lincoln municipal code relating to drones, introduced by Lamb.
So moved, second.
Second by Jane, discussion. Cindy?
Um, okay, so I have received a number of letters and concerns about the, hobby airplanes and all manner of, uh, toys that might be, um, affected by this particular ordinance. Um, I'm also, uh, concerned about, um, duplicating efforts of the F A. We heard a little bit about that at our last meeting and about just assigning our officers something else to do. So, um, I have, uh, I have real reservations about this particular ordinance and, uh, kind of over-regulating this. I think that it's already covered. This is just offering something local, and so I'm not going to be supporting this ordinance.
Alright, any other comments? Carl?
Yes. Um, I, I can respect that. Um, I, I do think that there is, uh, there is a local need and this, the, the use of drones is, is growing incredibly fast. I think I read recently that in two thousand and fifteen, there were eight billion dollars spent on, on drones and, uh, expected to double within the next five years. I mean, it's just a huge amount of growth that's happening. Uh, yesterday, uh, there was a drone that actually hit a British Airways plane in London. So if, if we see somebody operating a drone in a place where they shouldn't, that's dangerous. We heard a testimony last week from someone who said that someone was flying a drone, you know, very low, uh, down in, in the, uh, Hay Market or West Hay Market. And so, I mean, I guess there are ways that the L.P.D. could respond to that, but, uh, would, would seem to make sense that we would, um, we would want to in, provide encouragement to local law enforcement to do what they can do to keep people safe in the community, so I'm, I'm supportive of it.
Roy?
I have a staff question for Jeff Kirkpatrick. If, if today, right now, someone were out flying a drone in an unsafe manner near the airport, would there be anything they could be charged with such as public nuisance, reckless endangerment, or disturbing the peace?
The thing that we might look at would be disturbing the peace, and that's based on the context. Um, we'd have to identify someone whose peace they were disturbing. And if it was a wide-open area, no one really around, I'm not sure that we would feel comfortable pursuing that, that particular charge. I don't know of anything else that really fits. I mean, that's one of the issues that you, you run into with this. Does anything fit? Disturbing the peace is the one I think we would, we would go to first and most often in a situation like that. May or may not fit.
Okay, thank you. Jane?
Well, I'm, I'm going to be in support of, uh, this ordinance so that we have a little bit more teeth and our law enforcement actually has some authority to intercede when they see unsafe situations. I know that we received a lot of information from different folks in our city and, and lots of, uh, people who are involved with drones, but it, what is really striking is in one of the fact sheets that they provided us, it says, pilot reports of interactions with suspected unmanned aircraft have increased from two-hundred-and-thirty-eight sightings in all of twenty-fourteen to seven-hundred-and-eighty through August. That was of twenty-fifteen. And I think, um, at the public hearing, we had testimony provided, uh, by a professor who said, can you imagine, uh, at Christmas time, everyone who had asked for a drone might have got, uh, their wish fulfilled, but it seems like more and more drones are invading our airspace. And I, I do have concerns that we need to give our law enforcement some, some authority to, to have oversight, to intercede. And I think we had, uh, I don't know if Tom Cassidy came forward and said that they have no, no issue with, or who said that the, um, that the police department would feel comfortable with enforcing this and, and having no, no problems with it. So I think, and also, we have the upcoming air show, uh, May seventh, which will bring lots of, of people out and hopefully not lots of drones out, but uh, I think it's important to have something that law enforcement can work with. And oftentimes, you know, this is a great debate that goes on when, uh, sometimes local ju- jurisdictions are just one step ahead of the, the federal authorities in coming up with solutions, uh, in better managing these types of situations. So I certainly will support giving local authority and certainly law enforcement some more ability to, to execute their authority.
Alright, any other comments?
Well, I certainly don't think that there's any harm in trying this ordinance out as it's something that is in a evolving industry. Uh, we have our experts from the Airport Authority that are requesting this. And ultimately, we'll have to work with them to figure out, uh, if this is something that's reasonable. Um, I think it's reasonable for right now. Maybe it won't be reasonable in a year or two, uh, as more of these, uh, types of technologies come online, but I intend to support the resolution, uh, because we have a government entity that is requesting it from us, um, and it's a reasonable proposal. Alright, call the roll, please.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Rebal?
Yes.
Motion carried four to two. Item thirty-eight. Amending chapter eight-point-twenty of the Lincoln municipal code relating to the food code to require food handlers and food managers to prevent contamination of food from hands, introduced by Lamb.
So moved, second.
Second by Jane, discussion. Alright, call the roll, please.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebal?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Resolutions first reading are items thirty-nine through forty-seven. Ordinance's first reading, we just have one item, number forty-eight. Pending list date certain is item forty-nine.
Mr. Chair, adjournment.
Second.
Second by Jane, call the roll, please.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
We're adjourned.